All right, welcome, welcome to the city council meeting of the city of Yukon and Yukon Municipal Authority. It is August the 6th approximately 7:00 PM. We're gathered here at Council Chambers in the Centennial Building at 12 South 5th Street in Yukon, Oklahoma. This evening, our invocation will be delivered by Mike Jones from Town and Country Christian Church, followed by the flag salute.
Our Heavenly Father, we are so grateful for an opportunity to serve you as citizens and Lord as public servants. I pray you bless their efforts to find out of the many opinions, one truth that will continue to guide Yukon to more prosperity, and I thank you for the protection offered by civil servants and those serving in many capacities out here to make this town and this this growing bustling place as wonderful as it is. Again, we thank you and praise you for living in a country with its flaws, Lord, that still continues to do wonderful things and lead. And I just ask for your guidance and your wisdom tonight on all who are present. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening, we do not have any presentations or proclamations. We'll begin with our-
Mr. Mayor, we need to call the roll.
Oh, yes, sir. Sorry about that.
Pillmore?
Here.
Wooten?
Here.
Selby? Shriver?
Here.
Zimmerman?
Here.
At this time, we will take our visitors section. Anyone having an item of business to present to the city council that does not appear on the agenda, please come to the podium at this time. Please state your name and address. You're requested to limit your presentation to three minutes, and any item must be pertaining to the city of Yukon business. Do we have any visitors that have signed up?
I have no requests, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. At this time, we'll recess as Yukon City Council and reconvene as Yukon Municipal Authority. We'll take up the YMA consent docket. This item is placed on the agenda, so the Yukon Municipal Authority by unanimous consent can designate those routine items they wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of all authority members, that item will be heard in regular order. The acting city manager recommends a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of July 16th, 2024. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Any discussion? Seeing no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Selby?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Pillmore?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
At this time, we'll adjourn as Yukon Municipal Authority and reconvene as Yukon City Council. We'll take up the Yukon City Council Consent Docket. This item similarly is placed on the agenda, so that the Yukon City Council by unanimous consent can designate those routine items they wish to be heard and to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of all council members, that item will be heard in regular order. The acting city manager recommends a motion that will approve the minutes of the regular meeting of July 16th, 2024. Payment of material claims- Right down my amount. Payment of material claims of $1,083,290.61 and the order form with West Publishing Thompson Reuters for an updated one-year subscription to their ClearProflex system in the amount of $7,761.60 to be paid from the 2024-2025 Technology and Police Department budgets, as recommended by the IT Director. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Any discussion?
I had a quick question. I noticed going through the material claims payments that there were several that just said blanket under the description. I'm just wondering what those were and if we could get a little bit more specific.
I asked that same question earlier.
I did talk to the person agent. We discussed the need of details, so we'll talk about details in this blanket from here on out.
Sounds good.
So I can see where you had to question.
Yeah, it was something new I had never noticed before, so.
Any other discussion? Seeing, seeing no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Wooten?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Pillmore?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Mr. Clerk, do we have any reports from boards, commissions, or city officials?
As listed on the agenda, we have a wastewater treatment project update from Robbie Williams, a Garth Brooks Boulevard update from Arnold Adams, and a bank account update from acting city manager Mitchell Horton.
Very good. Thank you, Robbie.
Thank you.
Good evening. We're going to talk a little bit about the wastewater treatment plant. The last couple of council meetings, I've gone over our Phase 1 construction project to spend the ARPA funds that we have. We're looking at influent pumping, the aeration basin, the big rectangular tank, working on our clarifiers and building a wet well for pumping to the river. This project does not include the pipeline to the river. That's Phase 2, that's an EPA-funded project that we'll do next year. So yesterday, we did submit to DEQ for our permit to construct, so we're on schedule doing that. So what I want to talk to you a little bit tonight, and I'm just generally going to go through this. July 25th, we submitted a 208 plan modification to ODQ. That's the first step in increasing the rated capacity. And so right now, we've requested from 3 to 4.5 MGD. And so these maps just briefly kind of show you how we got there in a big picture. So the first map, all this started in 2018. 2000, us looking at increasing the plant. So at that time, we plotted three years of data, and you can see the red line. Now, in 2015, it was slowly increasing in an upward trend. So we kind of projected that out, and that's- We projected that daily average flow out, and we were somewhere around 2.8 million gallons a day. And I want everybody to understand, when we talk about the average daily flow of the plant, that's a 24-hour average. So like I was out there two weeks ago at 100 degrees, 2 o'clock in the afternoon, and the plant's actually flowing about 2.8 million. Because between 10 and 6, that's when all the wastewater's coming. So at night, we may be 500,000 to a million. And so that's how we get the average flow throughout the day. So what we did a couple of weeks ago, we got on the next graph. We plotted all the, we updated the history we had from 2015 to 2024. And what you're seeing on this map, all these blue dots represent the average daily flow for that particular day. So you can see for the most part, all the blue dots are between the 2 and a little above the 3. But when we look at this and look at the rest of the data, the, the average daily flow comes to about 2.6 million gallons a day. So that's what we're saying the flow is today. But you can see, we do have times when it's higher, especially from 2016 to 2020. Well, in 2021, as part of the State Highway 4 project, I don't know if you remember the four manholes at the corner of Wagner and State Highway 4. Well, when we removed those manholes and built a big box, junction box, we found an old 8-inch force main that had just been flowing water in it. And we think that was maybe about 200,000 gallons a day. And so we eliminated that, and with all the work, the pipe bursting, I&amp;I and everything that Yukon has done, our flow is basically flattened out at 2.6 MGD. So that's where we're at.
Do you think the outliers that are between 4 and 6 million MGD on those days, you know, half a dozen days or a dozen days there, is that additional stormwater infiltration?
That's correct.
That we just haven't-
Right.
-identified yet?
Right. Well, that's just infiltration in rainwater, storm events. Keep in mind, if we do get a large storm event, we do have the ability to pump water to a lagoon, store the water till the storm goes by, and then we just take it back to the plant and process the water. So if you go to the next page, this is kind of the map that we've been working with for several years. I'm not going to go into a lot of detail of this map, but how we get to the 4.5 MGD, if you look at the bottom right, the summary of future wastewater flows, we have the 2.6, where we're at today, 2.6 million gallons a day. If you look at the area, the current zoned area of Yukon, commercial and residential, that's a little over a million gallons a day for Yukon. And then Yukon does have three outside agreements to supply water outside the corporate limits, and that amount comes to 800,000. So that puts us right at 4.5 million gallons a day.
Has this data that you've pulled together here, Robbie, and all the engineering work behind it, has it been loaded into a GIS layer?
Well, it's in a CAD drawing, and we can work with the city to get this in a- work with Andrew and get this in a GIS.
I think that'd be great to kind of capture this, because this is really valuable work that's sort of generational in its scope, that hey, you know, we've done this estimate and put a line in the sand that we're going to need 4.5 million gallons. And this, I assume, from all these vacant plots and the zoning and the estimates, this quantifies all material vacant plots, correct?
That's correct. That's currently zoned.
That's currently zoned.
Not agriculture. Exactly.
Yeah. Okay. This is good. Is that possible, Mitchell, to get that put into a GIS layer?
Yes, all we have is you provide it to us, and we can put it in the GIS file or a layer. A lot of this is in the layer, other than the calc and stuff he has.
Yeah, I think it'd be great if we can, if we take this CAD and put it into GIS layer, then any citizen can pull that up and see, see what we are estimating from these different zones.
Yeah, we can do that.
I understand you're just wanting to get the map out there, right?
I want to capture it, like-
Okay, we can always do that with a PDF file.
Yeah, this gets captured in a, in a PDF that lives in the Agenda Center on the city's website, and I'd love it to be a living kind of thing where this is the 2024 estimate, and if we ask you to do this five years from now, then we have, then we can switch the layers on and off, and we can see the difference.
That's right. But I want to remind everybody, what we're doing today, we're accommodating this future growth. So like the influent, we're putting two pumps in. To, to go to 4.5, we need to go back and just put one pump in. And we're making the piping the size it needs to be.
Good.
So it'll be easy to go to this in the future.
I think the work that you guys are doing is outstanding. There's nothing more important for infrastructure-wise. I mean, I love streets, but there's nothing more important than getting sewage away from homes and businesses, and streets are pretty critical. I think the, I think the citizens will appreciate so much that we're, you know, we're basically making a generational update to the, to the wastewater treatment plant that prepares Yukon for the next 50 years.
That's correct.
Thank you, Robbie.
All right, thank you.
All right, at this time, we have Arnold with the Garth Brooks Boulevard update, speaking of streets.
Well, I'm happy to inform you on Phase 1 of the Garth Brooks Asphalt Overlay Project. All the asphalt has been laid from Vandemit to Main. Yesterday, they milled the outside two lanes from Vandemit to basically Brahms. They laid, they put the asphalt down today on those two lanes. Tomorrow, they'll switch the traffic, mill the inside lanes. They'll lay that asphalt Thursday, maybe a little Friday morning, but I think they will finish Thursday evening. Next week, there's four manholes that are basically starting at Oak, between Oak and Main Street, that need to be brought to grade, so they'll be going and sawing what they refer to as a diamond. They'll bring those manholes up to grade, and you'll see concrete poured around those. And then also, there's one storm inlet right in front of city bikes. They'll be sawing that out and bringing that up to, to grade, because it's busted up, so. They always want to put the asphalt in first, so they can make everything match that grade. And then the striping should come sometime end of next week, first of the next week, and that'll be the end of the project.
What's the engineering on the seam between the concrete and the asphalt? Is there any sealant there?
Yeah, there's a sealant that will be, after it's, after it's put in place, there's a sealant that'll be put there.
Okay. Then just for everybody's benefit, originally this project, what was the scope of it in terms of the roadway that was originally scoped?
The original scope was to mill 2 inches and put 2 inches of asphalt back.
From?
The original scope was from, I'm sorry, I didn't understand your question. I got you. The original scope was from Main Street to Vandemit.
Yep.
The grant, I believe it was 865, I think. So the bid came in a little over 550. So with that excess money, ODOT was nice enough to let us go ahead and do from Vandemit to basically Brahms.
Walk through how you guys achieved such a low bid and, and were able to make our money go further.
Well, I believe, I had to put that on Robbie. He engineered the project, and, and I believe even the engineer's estimate was, I believe there's just so much, there's so many funds, ARPA fund, and so I believe the contractors are fighting for the project. We had, the second bidder actually said, I don't understand how they can do it. That's what the materials cost. Well, these guys are just saying, they just want to basically keep their guys busy for a month before they start a $50 million project.
Wow.
So that, basically, they're just keeping the doors open for this. But these guys, and so we were a little concerned, like, how can these guys be $250,000, $300,000 cheaper than everybody else? But these guys have been, so we have watched, I mean, we have paid attention, we, from the start, these guys have been outstanding. All their equipment is new, they have great people.
And Atlas is doing the job?
Atlas paving, yes.
Outstanding.
Their people, it's been outstanding. And ODOT, we just can't say enough how much, they didn't have to let us go ahead and do that extra section from Vandemit.
That's big. Thank you so much, Arnold. Great work.
Did I talk about the striping? It will be done hopefully end of next week or first of the following, and then that's it.
Great work. All right, Mitchell, bank account update.
Okay, as, as directed, I and Doug have met with our banks that we have funds with. Basically, we've met with all the representatives from each of the three local banks, which we currently deposit city funds in. Each bank has agreed to adjust our accounts to increase the interest rates we will, we're previously receiving. Some accounts will receive interest credit monthly, some interest quarterly. We have certificates of deposits at all three institutions, and these instruments earn the highest returns. There's a sweep account at one bank on a checking account, but other checking accounts have simply been assigned an interest rate. We believe this makes more sense, and we will end up earning more interest than the sweep accounts. We did give you, attach a report. It's confidential. The banks have asked that to be confidential. Also, Noah has some questions to answer, which I'll get you some answers on that and more detailed information.
Are the, the ones that are in just checking accounts, are those collateralized deposits?
Doug, do you remember what they were calling them?
All the, all the accounts, yeah, there's, there's bank accounts at two banks that are checking accounts, and all of those are collateralized.
Excellent. And then when was the date that the interest was reset to the market rate of interest on, on those material accounts?
There were different dates, Mr. Mayor, just depending on when we were able to pin people down and get to a meeting.
For the largest bank, when was the, when was it, when did it go into effect?
Well, I think I've erased that from my calendar, but as I recall, it was that last full week of July.
Very good. Thank you. Any other questions or discussion on the bank accounts? Okay, speaking of banks, at this time, we'll consider approving the request for proposal that's been attached for Treasury Management and Investment Services specifications and authorizing the city clerk to advertise for proposals. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Pillmore?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes. At this time, we'll consider approving the replacement of 96 concrete panels to be funded out of the fiscal year 2024-2025 Streets Capital Improvement Account, not to exceed $274,430, to be completed by Brewer Construction and city staff, as recommended by the Public Works Direct, Director. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Pillmore?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
At this time, we'll consider approving ordinance number 1454 in ordinance of the city council of the city of Yukon, Oklahoma, amending Chapter 215 Unified Development Code of the Yukon Municipal Code by amending Article 5, General Development Standards, Section 505, Landscaping and Screening, making certain additions, insertions, and deletions, repealing ordinances in conflict, providing for severability, and declaring an emergency. Do I hear a motion?
Motion that we postpone this until we can have a study session on this.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
All right, this vote is to postpone the meeting. Shriver?
Postpone, the motion on the table is to postpone this item, this agenda item, until we're able to hold a study session, and then the, correct me if I'm wrong, councilperson Wooten, then it will be placed on a subsequent agenda.
That works for me.
Okay. Shriver?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Pillmore?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Seeing as this was postponed, we will skip over item 5A. Strike item 5A from the agenda. At this time, we'll consider approving ordinance number 1455 in ordinance of the city council of the city of Yukon, Oklahoma, amending Chapter 215 Unified Development Code of the Yukon Municipal Code by amending Article 4, Building Envelope Standards, Section 411, Urban Core Overlay District, making certain additions, insertions, and deletions, repealing ordinances in conflict, providing for severability, and declaring an emergency. Do I hear a motion?
I move also that we postpone this one. I would like to have a study session on this before we put it back on the agenda.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Any discussion? Seeing no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Wooten?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Pillmore?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Seeing as we postpone that one, we will strike 6A from the agenda. Okay. At this time, we'll consider approving the request for a planned unit development located at 2300 Frisco Road on behalf of On-Q R E LLC, as recommended by the Planning Commission. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Councilperson, do I hear a second?
Second.
Councilperson Wooten, would you consider postponing your, your motion or, I guess, closing off your motion so that I can make a potential amendment of language here?
Yeah, Doug, how do we need to do that? I believe you can concede the floor to Mr. Pillmore to make the appropriate adjustments. I'll concede the floor to Mr.-
Mr. Mayor.
I make a motion to amend this PUD in Section 9.8, the section labeled Lighting Regulations. And the amendment would be, and I can provide this language to you, Mr. Clerk, "The internally lit cabinets and the character price unit signs must all conform with the lighting limits and other requirements as outlined in our city code, Section 213-11, standards for billboards and similar non-accessory type signs in paragraphs 8 and 9." And then adding, "For the avoidance of doubt, although these signs are not electronic messaging displays, they must conform with the limits and requirements as outlined in paragraph 9, except as herein provided, the, the site lighting in this PUD shall be in accordance with the code of ordinances." Do I have a second?
Second.
I'll provide a little bit of background on this. We've had some concerns from citizens in the neighborhoods that are to the, to the north of this property and concerns around the light trespass. And so our, our city code already has some very good language that the team has developed over many years, and standards for billboards and other signage. This sign, while it's not an electronic messaging display and doesn't vary all sorts of LED colors and so on, it's a, it's an On-Q, a large On-Q sign that's backlit, and then it has a price display for diesel and unleaded fuel. This, this, these requirements, I think, will keep the light to a reasonable level and, and just applies existing code to this signage. Any other discussion on this motion that we have on the floor to amend the PUD?
Okay, but we're not voting on the PUD itself.
We're not voting on the PUD yet, just this potential amendment.
Okay, because I have some concerns over signage.
And we can take an additional motion in a minute. Okay, seeing no more discussion on the side of Mr.-
Wasps.
You get it, Jeff?
No, I'm not touching it.
It's on your water bottle.
Come on, guys.
Chief Ford.
Here, let a lady handle it. Thank you.
All right, little, for those, for those watching at home, there was a little, a little wasp, a little wasp on the-
It was not little, it was ginormous.
All right, seeing no more discussion, Mr.-
Wait a minute, does, does On-Q have, do you have discussion before we vote?
So, David Box, 522 Call Cord Drive. I don't, we're struggling to see what this does. What I can tell you is that the, the sign has an automatic trigger that at darkness, it goes to a 10% of the nit level that would otherwise be experienced during the day.
Yeah, that's good.
It's around 500 nits.
That would very much comply with this.
Okay, as long as that's the case.
Yeah, I think your sign is a lot simpler than some of these EMDs, so I don't think you'll have an issue complying. But it, it basically, it basically puts in place some required- It puts in, Mr. Box, it puts in place some, just some light level requirements that are very standard in the lighting industry, and we can- All right, any other discussion on this item?
Are you guys okay?
We just didn't have much time to review-
I know.
The documents.
I know, yeah. Let's give them just a few minutes.
Yeah, take your time.
How many foot candles?
Let me pull up the code right now.
Mohammed Khan with SMC Consulting. Question is that, yeah, this ordinance is there, but in term of foot candles, how many foot candles do you allow the maximum for signage? Because we know that what our foot candle is for our sign, and I want to make sure that the foot candle, what we calculated, falls within the allowable category you have.
Absolutely. Give me one second while I pull up the code of ordinances here, and I'll, I'll give you that information. There's a, there's a foot candle calculation that takes the square, the square root of the surface area of the sign and multiplies it by 100, and then it, so, Section 213-11, the, Section 8 deals with the flashing and intermittent nature of it, and then Section 9- and then Section nine is really where the meat and potatoes are, and you have a calculation that no sign shall exceed a brightness of more than point-three-foot candles when measured by, measured by a distance which is defined by the square root of the product of the sign area. So you take the sign area and then you, and multiply it by one hundred. So that's the distance that you measure from, and if you measure greater than point-three-foot candles, then it would violate this ordinance.
Yeah. So rather do going through this formula, would the committee agree to fifty-foot candle?
Fifty?
Yeah.
Absolutely not.
But, so, let me give you.
Fifty-foot candles is a hundred times the brightness of the moon.
Not at all.
Fifty-foot candles, from what?
Fifty-foot candle, yeah. Fifty-foot. You, you know what's the twenty-seven-foot light pole produce?
What distance are you measuring the, the light intensity at?
So the height of the sign is based on the square footage over there. So the LED light poles, what typically goes on the side, are only like twenty-four feet tall, and they produce around like a twenty-seven-foot candle.
How many square foot is the On-Q sign total?
Do we need to postpone and make us- Kind of threw the, threw them for a loop, sorry.
Thanks, sir. So you're- Sir, your sign is a total of seven-hundred-and-twenty-five square foot?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and so you would take the square root of seven-hundred-and-twenty-five, multiply it by a hundred feet, and you would measure the foot candles at that distance?
This may surprise you, but there was no math class in law school.
It doesn't surprise me. I never, I never give accounting projects to lawyers. I give lots of projects to lawyers, but no accounting projects to them.
Let, let's let my engineer do some math.
Mohammed, if you, if you take, if you measure approximately twenty-seven-hundred feet away, it's like half a mile away, you just have to be under point-three-foot candles.
And, and I would say that, oh, sorry, and I would say that at distance will be zero. That's, that's the number we're coming up with.
I believe it.
Okay.
Yeah, so you're okay with this?
Yeah, I'm okay with it, but I just wanted to tie down us
No problem.
to a number which we haven't verified yet.
Yeah, I mean, it's the square root of your square footage of the sign.
Yeah.
Right?
And don't forget the pi.
Times one hundred.
Don't forget the pi, three-point-one-four involving.
Got to keep going.
Yeah.
All right, uh, okay, any other discussion?
It's a first.
It's a first?
You guys are good.
Yes.
All right, so the motion on the table is to amend the PUD with the language that I mentioned earlier to be provided to the city clerk. Any other discussion? Okay, seeing no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Shriver?
Yes.
Selby?
Again, this is just for the amendment, not for the actual PUD.
Absolutely.
Okay, yes.
Pillmore?
Yes.
Wooton?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Okay, at this time, do we have any other motions on this item?
I'd just like to bring up a concern. The Planning Commission, after they approved the sign type, immediately said they wished that they had, had not done it. They want it to be like Oklahoma City Norman and Edmund, sixty feet instead of, what is it currently at?
Hundred-and-twenty-five feet overall.
So they would like for us to send it back to them, the sign height?
Councilwoman Selby, are you making a motion to send it back to the Planning Commission?
Well, I'm asking them what, they said they would like for you just to agree to it.
Uh, Mr. Box, please hang for one second. We're, we're not able to have a discussion without the motion on the table. So at this time, if there's a motion, if the motion, if you'd like to make a motion, we can make, you, feel free to make a motion.
I make a motion that we amend it to a sixty-foot sign or send it back to the Planning Commission for them to revisit that.
Mr. Reinhardt, can we have a motion that has an or in it like that?
No, I mean, it needs to be one.
Okay.
Which one would you like, Councilwoman Selby?
To send it back to the Planning Commission.
The motion on the table is a motion to send the PUD back to the Planning Commission. Do I hear a second? Hearing no second, that-
The Planning Commission-
That motion-
Is our group.
Motion fails. Do I hear any other motions? Councilman Wooton, would you like to re-present your motion from earlier?
I believe my motion was so moved.
Okay, it was, and it was seconded. Would you like to bring it back to the floor?
That's fine with me.
All right, the motion on the table at this time is to consider approving the request for the PUD located at twenty-three-hundred Frisco Road on behalf of On-Q R E L L C as recommended by the Planning Commission. And Councilperson Wooton, that would be with the motion, with the amendment that's already been made.
Correct.
Okay, and that, that was seconded by Councilman Zimmerman.
David, they, they knocked mine down. They knocked the Planning Commission's down, so.
All right, at this time, we'll, we'll open for discussion. Is there any discussion on this item, on this motion?
I would just like to say that the Planning Commission asked that we do that because they're the ones who sent it to us to begin with, and so I'm sad that we're not going by their recommendation.
Mr. Mayor, may I?
Yes, you may address it, Mr. Box.
So what I would tell you is that I've, I've been doing On-Q work since they came to the market. There is not a, a standard. When they go to a site, they hire multiple consultants, some of which are sign consultants. So, so they pick a sign height based upon the unique characteristics of each site. There are signs in Oklahoma City that I've done for On-Q that exceed a hundred feet in height. It really is just dependent upon circumstances on the site, circumstances on the highway, overpasses, all of those things. So there isn't a standard. They're different in every market. This one was selected based upon the sign consultants telling them what the safest height is based upon exit points, et cetera, along Interstate forty.
I am just passing on what the Planning Commission, my representative, asked us to do.
But their, their vote was to send it to council and recommended approval at this height originally, though, which is what we're going on about.
They sent to each one of us an email, is what I'm understanding, as well as I did, that they would like to reconsider that. So, but they voted not to do it, so don't worry.
And there was discussion. I mean, we had it, we had this discussion, so I don't know that they missed it. We had a pretty in-depth discussion on the, the height of the sign.
They, I mean, he called me that night and said, man, I wish I hadn't have, so.
We think he got it right. We think he got it right.
Is there any other discussion? All right, hearing no additional discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Pillmore?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Wooton?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Selby?
In light of my Planning Commission person, I will vote no.
At this time, we'll consider approving a preliminary plat on behalf of On-Q R E L L C located at twenty-three-hundred Frisco Road as recommended by the Planning Commission. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? One question that perhaps you can answer for me, Danielle. Did we receive all of the onsite utilities being labeled as public or private?
Yes, we, all the conditions that Planning Commission set, they did meet with the plat that you all received in your emails with the agenda.
Okay, and did we receive a description of the improvements such as the grading, paving, tree planting, walks, installation of utilities, which the subdivision proposed to make?
Yes.
Okay, does, do all of those improve, those, especially the landscaping improvements, given what we had on the prior agenda item that we postponed, does it meet all of our code from a landscaping plan standpoint?
Yes, they have, they've provided plenty of landscaping.
Very good. Any other discussion? All right, seeing no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Pillmore?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Wooton?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Box, and thank you, On-Q. We're looking forward to having you in our community.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll consider approving a preliminary plat on behalf of Wallace Design Collective located at the Vandament Westport Development at fourteen oh one West Vandament as recommended by the Planning Commission. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? A reminder for all those, this is the new Variety Care Healthcare Building that will be constructed at fourteen oh one West Vandament. Any other discussion? Seeing no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Wooton?
Yes.
Pillmore?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
At this time, we'll consider approving amend, approving budget amendments for fiscal year twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on these items? Seeing no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Wooton?
Yes.
Pillmore?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes. At this time, we'll consider approving Resolution number twenty-two-four dash fifteen, a resolution of the City of Yukon casting a vote for Cindy Shivers as trustee of the Oklahoma Municipal Retirement Fund, OKMRF, to fill the expiring term of at-large trustee representing the entire membership. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Cindy, do you want to do this?
I would love to do it.
Okay.
I'm excited.
Okay.
We're excited to have you serve there, Cindy, if the, if the votes come through. Uh, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Selby?
Yes.
Pillmore?
Yes.
Wooton?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
At this time, we'll consider approving an interlocal agreement between Canadian County District Number One and the City of Yukon for roadway improvements on Wilshire Boulevard from Simiron Road East to Richland Road at an estimated project cost of four-hundred-and-forty-eight thousand, six-hundred-and-eighty-three dollars and thirty-two cents, using the Canadian County six-month bid sheet from July one, twenty-twenty-four through December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four as recommended by the acting city manager. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on this one? I think this is a great partnership. We've worked on Mitchell with the whole team to partner up with the, the county and getting materials at great cost and really making our dollars go a long ways.
I think Tracy Ryder had a lot to do with this, didn't she?
No, this convinced your man.
This is Mansky's one, okay.
Great work for, from you and the team. Seeing no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Selby?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Pillmore?
Yes.
Wooton?
Yes.
At this time, we'll consider approving a project application for a STBG dash UZA grant for roadway improvements along Garth Brooks Boulevard from Northwest Tenth Street to Health Center Parkway, preliminary estimate of two-point-two million dollars, with eighty percent covered by the STBG dash UZA, which will be one-point-seven-six million dollars and twenty percent paid by the City of Yukon, estimated at four-hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars. God bless you, as, as recommended by the acting city manager. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? I think these grant applications are great, that we're staying active here on this one and the next one, and hopefully making our dollars go along with, with some other grant dollars, and God willing, we'll, we'll win some of these. Any other discussion? Seeing no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Shriver?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Wooton?
Yes.
Pillmore?
Yes. At this time, we'll consider approving a project application for a STBG dash UZA, I'm getting that, grant for intersection improvements for Northwest Tenth Street and Cornwell Drive, Check Hall Road, preliminary estimate of six-point-one-one million with eighty percent covered by STBG dash UZA, which is estimated at four-point-eight-eight-eight million dollars with twenty percent paid by the City of Yukon, estimated at one-point-two-two-two million dollars as recommended by the acting city manager. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Pillmore?
Yes.
Wooton?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes. At this time, we'll discuss and make possible action to move forward with our utility rate implementation plan. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Uh, it was a little bit earlier in the summer that we took up the action and accepted the utility rate study, which we had several working sessions on, and great work by the consultants that we engaged. Um, this utility rate plan implementation is, is a significant change in the, I would say, a significant change in the structure of how we bill for water, sewer, and sanitation services, and it's also will result in a price change. For very low volume users, and I mean very low volume users, they may see relatively flat charges. For someone with a household of a handful of people, they're likely going to see a small increase, give or take. I'd call it, I, I calculated my home where we use about six to eight thousand gallons of water a month, and it was about an eight percent increase in my monthly spend, but anybody can calculate their own. And then for commercial businesses or heavy residential users, they will see, because this is a much more variable cost plan, as you use more gallons of water, you will pay in linear proportion for that usage. And so those costs are actually going to increase quite a bit. And for higher commercial users, some of the estimates that I've run could be up to a thirty percent increase for heavier users. So this is definitely something that everyone should pay attention to, and it aligns usage with the costs of, you know, usage of water and usage of sewer with the costs, and then it really changes our sanitation structure for residential users. It just puts on a flat fee for everyone before it was billed based on your water usage, which didn't make a lot of sense.
That's what I'd like to point out. That no longer will you see OKC water twenty dollars on there, and that's something I've worked for for several years, and not everybody pays the twenty dollars. You may use a little bit, so you shouldn't be paying the same amount as someone like me who uses a lot of water.
That's a great point. So, you know, I just want to give that overview. Additionally, we'll have ability for customers to opt out of paper billing and receive a discount on their bill. Um, and, and some other, there's a few more complicated things that are going into effect that if, that don't really affect the vast majority of residential customers, but affect commercial customers and, and new developments here and there. So something to pay attention to. The rate study was very well done. The team is being led by Jason Beal internally within the city, as well as Jason Morrell, who leads our utility billing department, and will be implementing these changes in the coming months. Project is already underway, and that, that's what this motion is, is authorizing essentially to start implementing. There's a lot.
It was a lot. So this is going to help, let's say, older, older people that are on fixed income that don't use a lot of water?
It's definitely going to align their bill. You know, it's not, they're not going to see a huge drop in their bill, but their bill is going to be, finally, it's going to be aligned with usage. And so I don't want anybody getting the idea that they're going to see a huge drop in the bill, because those, those really low users, they were actually benefiting from the sanitation fee, which was four dollars and change for them. I mean, imagine that, you get two Poli-carts picked up at your house four times a month, five times a month on some months for four dollars and change. That sounds like a deal to me. Um, now it's going to be about sixteen or eighteen dollars, I believe, uh, flat for everyone. So the very low volume users of water are going to see that their trash bill goes up a little bit, and they're going to see that their water bill goes down quite a bit, and, but in general, those low-volume users, it's going to be about a wash, and they can calculate that by looking at the utility rate study. And there's, and/or the proposals that we'll begin to see for ordinance changes, and you can easily take your water bill from the last twelve months and look at it and say, here's how much I use generally, and, and kind of compute your water bill.
Good stuff.
Yeah, all right. Any other discussion? Seeing no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Wooton?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Pillmore?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes. Thank you, Jason and Mitchell and, and Jason Morrell for all the work on this. It's a lot. Thank you, Jason and Mitchell and, and Jason Morrell, uh, for all the work on this. It's a lot.
Mayor, before you get into item number sixteen, I was going to let you know that Todd Court, the attorney who's advising the city on the R S Meacham case, sent me a late evening email to say that the, he's requesting that the city continue that particular discussion. He's awaiting feedback from the defendant's attorneys and has not yet received it. He'd hoped to receive it before tonight's meeting and did not.
Thank you for that input. Um, prior to moving to executive session, we're going to address item number twenty-one on the agenda, um, and, uh, and then we will, and then we will resume, uh, item sixteen with a little modification there. So item twenty-one, at this time, we'll open the floor up for each councilperson to say a few words in closing. This item is reserved for announcements, recognitions, et cetera. It's not intended for the conduct of city business by members of the public body. Uh, councilperson Selby?
Yes, I saw a post today from, I guess, one of the contractors on Garth Brooks, and he said he just wanted to thank the people that were on Garth Brooks for being patient, and I just want to encourage us all to really be patient with those workers. Um, I know it's an inconvenience. I know you're sitting through lights, but boy, is it going to be worth it in the end. So I was very glad that he recognized that and the hard work they're putting in.
Hey, I was going to touch base on the roads. I know, um, Garth Brooks was a big concern, trying to get it done before school started. So, it probably another than Striper, it's pretty well done. I've driven on it, it's smooth. So thanks for your detail on that.
Thanks so much, Councilman Shriver. Um, Rodney?
Um, I wanted to, to thank the construction company on that too, because I know I was going to get an earful from some of my coworkers that teach over there on that side of town. Um, it's great to drive down in the speed that they have gone through. That is, is incredible. Also, tonight is the night, three o'clock in the morning, um, high jump, so.
Vernon Turner, it's going to be amazing.
It'll be exciting, so. I, I'll be up, if you're wondering. I'll be awake at three o'clock. I'll, I'll have it on.
Vice Mayor Wooton?
Um, I'm going to change it up. We've got some birthdays that I'm going to say happy birthday to. Van the Man, my little boy, turned twelve. Uh, a few more years he can run for stuff and be city council, as he says. Um, my middle child turned sweet sixteen, so look out for her driving, and councilwoman, one of our constituents, old friend, Mr. Lacy, Terry Lacy, turned two hundred years old this year. So, I call him the pillar of Yukon, so happy birthday, Mr. Lacy.
He's in my ward. Happy birthday, Terry.
An update of a few special events here in Yukon in August. Uh, the last concert is August the eighth, uh, that's, um, Thursday, two days from today. Uh, seven PM to eight thirty PM, Chisholm Trail Park Large Gazoo, it's free to everyone. It's going to feature family-friendly karaoke, and, uh, I'm hoping to see the real talent of the citizens shine there. Uh, fun, Friday Fun Days, the last Friday Fun Day is August the ninth at ten AM in Sunrise Park at the Splash Pad. It's free to everyone, all ages are welcome. Bring your own water guns and be ready to get wet there. It's going to be water wars. Rock the Route is Thursday, August twenty-ninth, from six PM to eleven PM, one of our great live music vent, uh, events here in Yukon on Route sixty-six. They'll shut it down between, uh, fourth and, uh, at Fourth and Main Streets with, um, with the, uh, stage there. Emissions free to everyone, activities will be geared to all ages, and the performers this year are, uh, my wife's good friend and his wife are good friends, Corey Kent, uh, Grant Gilbert, and Cam Allen. Um, it's a family-friendly event. There's going to be a family fun area as well as food trucks. Um, we had a, a sad event in our city earlier today with, um, someone who ended their life and, apparently, and, um, it really, when I heard the news of that this morning, it, it saddened me, and, uh, I want all of our citizens to know that help is available. Uh, everyone in Yukon is, is, uh, I've never found a more caring community, and, uh, if you feel like you don't have anybody to talk to, there's a suicide helpline at nine eight eight, you, which you can dial and, uh, be connected to counselors there. Okay, at this time, we'll resume on item sixteen. Uh, we'll consider a motion to recess as city council, convenient to executive session for discussing the candidates for city manager as provided in twenty-five O S two thousand and three, section three oh seven B one, and for confidential communications from the city's attorneys regarding the pending action styled the city of Yukon, Oklahoma.
Mayor, you don't need to read that.
Oh, I don't need to read that one. We'll strike that one. We'll strike the pending action on the city attorneys, and we'll just, uh, enter into executive session for discussing the candidates for city manager. Do I hear a motion?
And possibly taking action.
And possibly taking action.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Selby?
Yes.
Wooton?
Yes.
Pillmore?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Now I need to get my.
Do you have a copy of that?
Item seventeen?
Yes, thank you. I, I just, I stuck in the back. Right. At this time, we'll consider a motion to reconvene from executive session and reconvene as the Yukon City Council. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Pillmore?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Wooton?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes. At this time, I'll read the minutes from the executive session. While in executive session, only the items on the agenda were discussed, no action was taken, and no votes were cast. Um, item eighteen, we will scratch. Item nineteen, we will scratch. Um, is there any new business?
No new business tonight, Mr. Mayor.
All right, at this time, uh, we will adjourn.